I'm going to call in December 3, 2024, council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag—
Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Yeah, here.
Before you are the minutes from the Tuesday, November 19, 2024 council meeting. Does anybody have questions on those?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion to approve. Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. You also have the November 21, 2024 special council meeting minutes before you. Does anybody have questions on those?
I'll move to approve as presented. I'll second that motion.
Mr. Myers made a motion to approve. Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Does anybody wish to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Carolyn Shireman left the Ad Hoc Committee for Council Rules tonight on her own terms and didn't have to listen to the haters, even though one of them made a comment after the meeting that she should resign from everything. I don't know what she deserved for this type of treatment. What council rules did she violate? Some members of this council repeatedly violate council rules in almost every meeting. I believe that you take great pleasure in this. You can't have it both ways. However, nothing is done to you for these violations. Oh, that's right. You don't care. It's all about yourselves and your agenda. One of the council members even made the statement, "You and your constitutional rights." As a veteran, I was offended by this comment. The Constitution is the law of this country, and if you don't want to abide by it, then move to a foreign country. For months and months and many, many hours spent on cameras and internet service, the violations of council rules, the call for an emergency meeting on the Health and Safety Committee, then three minutes, it was over. No more. It was over. Not a word. Third, now we have a $4.25 an hour pay increase for city wages. I understand the need, but at what cost? Why do others also benefit from this? This is not for the police department nor the fire department. However, the firefighters' union contract is up at the end of this month. How much is this going to cost? Where's the money coming from? I would like to know from the auditor on this. Are you going to increase the water, sewer, and trash rates? The 2% tax credit coming back into the picture? Mr. Myers said at the last committee meeting that they didn't want to talk about it at that time. But Mr. Myers and Mr. Mead said that in past meetings that they wouldn't vote to repeal this. Have things changed now? This wage increase, did anyone check on what the county and other local governments around us are paying for these type of employees? I don't think so. Doesn't look like it. Is this just a fleecing of the taxpayers of the city of Bucyrus? Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Dan Wireball, 1092 Martha Avenue. And my name's Dan Wireball. I've served on city council since 2010 as chairman of Public Lands, Health and Safety, and Finance Committees. Back then, we may not have agreed, but we got along because people elected us to represent them in the business of the city. In my tenure, we passed the 0.5% income tax safety forces levy, allowing the city to buy new vehicles and bolstering manpower back to much-needed levels, build a new water treatment plant, spent $700,000 to $800,000 annually on improving our streets, sent water to Sulfur Springs, down Stetser Road, and to Nevada, and took on the county water district, signed a storm water treatment agreement with the Ohio EPA, saved the Pines Reservoir, refurbished the All Miller Park Pool, and installed a slide, and planned and signed the agreement to update the white wastewater treatment plant, among other things. So I kind of feel I know my way around here. This is a message to the citizens of Bucyrus and the people they elected. On 9/19/2024, amidst the current election, your council president posted on YouTube, "Bucyrus Exposed," a video of where he had inadvertently—or advertently—walked into a private conversation between three women about feminine products, and then complained he didn't feel it was appropriate conversation, injecting himself into the conversation and baiting a council person into a conversation about if she would be at the next meeting or not. He then went on to disseminate this throughout the community in his feeble little mind to promote his candidate for commissioner. This is all on security footage that your council president must have had access to. But you and I don't— But you and I don't, do we? Was this a setup? Because this council person was running against his minion running for county commissioner. Watch the video and you decide. In the past week, there have been at least four more YouTube videos on "Bucyrus Exposed" demeaning council members that are trying to do the business of the city. The position you elected them to do. There will be more, because he is trying to conceal his ineptness at managing this city council, which is what he was elected to do. If you can't do your job, deflect. Blame someone else. We have all worked with these kind of individuals. He would rather destroy the city than let the public know what kind of person he is, the kind that gets a CPO filed between him and a juvenile? He would rather destroy the city than let some of his business slip away. He is only in that seat to protect his business. He doesn't care about you. He never will. Just ask him. Careful, though. He's probably watching you. Now that you're going—now, what are you going to do about it? You going to let it play out? You going to let him and his yahoos ruin the image of this fine city? We are already getting thousands of views on social media. You going to wait until we get a series on TLC right after Honey Boo Boo or before Thousand Pound Sisters? We need 100 people writing letters to the council or coming up, speaking, saying—coming up and speaking, saying, "Lead us. Lead. Shut up or get out of the way. We ain't going to take this anymore. It's your city. Take it back or lose it."
Before I start, I have a document. Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I debated speaking on this issue due to the confrontational nature of Mrs. Shireman. I hope the closure of our mutual CPOs would curb this rhetoric towards myself and other citizens who have recently come under fire by Mrs. Shireman. A recent video by Mr. Finkhauser addresses that Mrs. Shireman was provoked to anger by myself and other constituents due to a nervous laugh I made before speaking during public participation, and that Mrs. Shireman should not be held responsible for her own actions. I felt it necessary for this document to be presented during council meeting, as it may be recorded into the meeting minutes. On April 18, 2024, I attended a committee meeting. I had no ulterior motive other than being fed up with the petty schoolyard arguing and name-calling. Council is supposed to be representative of the good in our community, and passionate debate is a welcome function of city government, petty personal attacks or not. At that meeting, I was ridiculed by Mrs. Shireman for stating that there are people who watch and are deeply concerned with the behavior of individuals on council that distract and deter the council from getting actual work done. I simply came and encouraged everyone to get along and try to work towards common goals. I believe the phrase I used was "take a breath." That is what I tell myself and my kids. Ironically, the same advice was given by Law Director Gobright recently. Mrs. Shireman also created the Bucyrus City Council for the citizens of Bucyrus. It was a group not officially administered by the city council. This created an issue because it gave the impression of all positions made by Mrs. Shireman on that page were official statements by the council. There were a lot of posts disenfranchising voters made by Mrs. Shireman, who was attempting to administer this group for the purpose of fostering discussion and providing an open forum. When I brought that concern up, I was banned and blocked. I informed the former law director, and he informed Mrs. Shireman that she could not use Bucyrus City Council as an official group—because it's not an official group administered by council. It is clear that this was the intention for Mrs. Shireman to discuss issues with constituents. But when those constituents respectfully disagree with her, she does not want to hear their opinions. This group was renamed one opinion to another, in which Mrs. Shireman continued to represent herself as council member as large, and continued to ridicule and taunt members of the public. Anytime another opinion of an individual was voiced, their opinion was ridiculed and eventually blocked and banned. This behavior led to the creation of other opinions than Carolyn's. It was a satirical group lamenting on the mutual experience of being blocked and banned by Mrs. Shireman. This group was not created by me, however, I am a member. This behavior and her representing herself as Councilwoman Shireman on that page, and the precedent of her page being an open forum, shows Mrs. Shireman in her official capacity as disenfranchising voters from banning them from an open forum and limiting their right to free speech. For those who would like to look into this more, I encourage you to read the opinion by the Honorable Amy Coney Barrett and the linked v-freed ruling. Mrs. Shireman is insistent that I'm only up at council meetings because of her. I assured her this is not true. But she is a persistent problem to be dealt with, a problem that has deterred council from doing real work. Due to one critical statement of you and your group, you're guilty conscious in internalizing my comments about getting along with your coworkers and my criticism of Mr. Finkhauser and his personal business with his—and interfering with the business of city council and the infrastructure, you decided I was a threat. You misinterpret my criticism of your actions as a city official as a personal attack. On July 23, at 2:31 PM, a report was made to the Ohio State University Department of Student Conduct. I will provide that to any council member who wishes to have it. In that report, Mrs. Shireman states she is representing city council and is speaking to a state agency investigator in the official capacity as a city council member. She uses her official title and alleges that I'm conducting investigations on behalf of Ohio State University and therefore engaging in ethics violations. She states I'm personally attacking members of council through records requests, and that I'm trying to take control of city council. She then speaks on behalf of the former law director, saying that I am in violation of Ohio Ethics Commission, which is a lie. She states I'm sending requests on behalf of Ohio State despite it clearly stating that I'm a student, and it's customary for students to state their affiliation on their personal emails, as I am a business major with the Fisher College of Business. She also lied in that investigation—to the investigator, stating that Bucyrus City Council decided to cut public speaking from the agenda. This was the basis of my CPO, which was dropped, and then I was told should have been handled by law enforcement as harassment, and a no-contact order should have been made. It could be argued that Mrs. Shireman is continuing to break the law. She used her official title to speak on behalf of city council as a whole. Based on the libel she spread about me in this report, the opinion pieces in Crawford County Now and the subsequent meeting that evening in which she slandered me in a parliamentary inquiry—
Mr. Myers, you are out of order. You are out of order.
Thank you.
You have exceeded the timeline.
Thank you.
Next public participation—public participant, please.
This is only one account of many other stories people have of what Mrs. Shireman has done, and I hope others will step forward. Their stories are not mine to tell. I can only speak to my experience. I would hope Mrs. Shireman would just resign from full council, though I doubt she will. I could file with probate. The city and its electors could file a complaint with the Court of Common Pleas, where the council can look into the Ohio Revised Code to remove a member due to gross misconduct in office. The first two options are arduous and costly, so I urge us to be referred to the proper committee for discussion and/or removal of Mrs. Shireman from all committees and possibly full council. Thank you.
Any more public participation? Seeing none, we are going to move on to communications and petitions with a letter from the Bucyrus Public Library. Do you want me to read that?
If you don't mind.
This letter is from the Bucyrus Public Library. November 8, 2024. Dear City Council Members, Nancy McMurray will continue to serve on the Bucyrus Public Library Board of Trustees for the upcoming term of January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2028. Her current term expires December 31, 2024. Thank you, Stephanie D. Buchanan, Director of Bucyrus Public Library. I'm assuming that we need to vote on this?
The library ones go through economic development?
Ah, yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
I'd like to refer that to economic development, please.
Mr. Myers made a motion to refer this appointment to economic development. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It's been referred. And we also have the 2024 property maintenance end-of-year report. I'm not going to read this. Do we just want to accept and file it?
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
I'll second it.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion to accept and file. Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It is—
Mr. President, I need to call a point of order. We have a problem with not everyone's voting, so—
Oh, oh. I know how to take care of this.
No.
We're going to do a revote, because Mrs. DeShawn has called a point of order. Is there any objection to accepting and filing this letter by unanimous consent?
I object.
I object.
Last day of roll call votes, here.
A roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Okay, we— I need a motion then to accept and file a letter by roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded to accept and file a letter by roll call vote.
Myers.
Yes.
DeShawn.
Yes.
Shireman.
Yes.
Moritz.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Hickman.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Okay. Who called the original objection to accepting by unanimous consent? I believe during—when that happens, that their vote has to be officially recorded as a no on the roll call. So could you please change Mr. Myers for the official minutes as a no?
Wait, what?
Yeah, when you do a unanimous consent, somebody objects, that one person, they're— You can't vote no and then vote yes.
I believe they can't. I believe that they're saying no to unanimous consent. The way I understand Robert's rules is that you can request a unanimous consent agreement for whatever you want. However, if there's an objection, it has to go to roll call.
Okay. We'll just leave it at stands. However, I would like to have it recorded in the minutes that Mr. Myers did object to the unanimous consent.
Mr. President, then I would also like it recorded in the record that the individual that I did the point of order against was Mrs. Shireman for not voting. Thank you.
Moving on, standing committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. Mead.
Ah, no report.
Any questions for Plating Committee? Moving on, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sherrick.
No report at this time.
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings Committee? Moving on, Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. DeShawn.
No report at this time.
Any questions for Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none, moving on. Finance Committee, Mr. Myers.
No report.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Seeing none, moving on. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Hickman.
I have no report at this time.
Any questions for Economic Development Committee? I just have one. The JED, do we have any update on it?
As far as I know, she's still trying to get a hold of the townships. There are some holdouts still.
And that would be who?
I'm not sure.
I mean, as far as who's trying to get a hold of—
Oh, Sarah Hulley.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Service Committee, Mr. Moritz.
No report at this time.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, Mrs. DeShawn.
The Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bucyrus City Council, Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapter 111, Council, Rules of Council in Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapter 113, ordinances and resolutions, met tonight at 5:15 PM for the purpose of discussing the removal of Carolyn Shireman from the Ad Hoc Committee. Mrs. Shireman spoke under public participation and removed herself from the committee, and I accepted as the committee chair her removal. End of my report.
Any questions for Special Ad Hoc Committee? Is there any anticipated upcoming meeting for the Special Ad Hoc Committee, Mrs. DeShawn?
I will be getting with Ms. Wise, who will be sending out the standard email to the committee members with several dates for them to choose from for their availability. And I will be doing that tomorrow, so hopefully at tomorrow's ad hoc meeting, we can announce when the next ad hoc committee meeting will be held.
Tomorrow's ad hoc?
Oh, excuse me. We don't have that. Duh, no. I guess it'll be at the next council meeting. Or if we choose to meet before then, there'll be an announcement posted in documents on demand.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, the Special Ad Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance, Mr. Mead.
So December 9 at 5 o'clock, we'll be meeting to remove—to discuss removing Ken Long and Carol Shireman from the International Property Maintenance Code. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Mead? Seeing none, moving on. Special Ad Hoc for zoning map, Mr. Mead again?
No. No comment.
Any questions for Mr. Mead? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mayor Trucca?
No meeting.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none. Need a motion to accept committee reports collectively?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Did everybody—did you hear everybody, Vicky? Did they all?
Yes.
Okay, it's been approved. Report of city officers, Mayor Trucca.
I have no mayor's report, but I do have a planning commission meeting report. I'd like that. Let me read it.
Yes.
Okay. Bucyrus City Planning Commission met on Monday, December 2, 2024. It was requested that the following items be approved by the planning commission and be submitted to the appropriate committees for review. Number one, proposed zoning reclassification of 316 and 320 Woodlawn Avenue, prospective parcel ID number is 08006505200 from apartment residential AR to urban neighborhood residential R3 to allow for potential expansion at church property. Number two, proposed establishment of Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 1187.021 pawns. The planning commission approved the draft legislation without any proposed additions or alterations. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, moving on. Service Directors' Report, Mr. Star.
Hold on, can we have a motion to move those back to plating, please? I'm making a motion to have them moved back to plating.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mead has made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded to move—
Does that need to be referred to zoning if there's already a committee working on all the zoning at ad hoc?
Well, my understanding is when it comes out of the committee, it goes to the planning commission, then we have to put it back in committee.
Okay, withdrawn.
So we don't need to put it back?
We do.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Make a motion, put it back into plating.
And I second it back.
On favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed. It has been referred. Now we're going to move on to the Service Directors' Report. Mr. Starner.
Thank you, Mr. President. The county still has some larva funds left. We met with the county commissioners on Wednesday, November 20, 2024, and discussed the water line extension for Route 4 South and Mount Zion eastbound, and the Andridge Road and Beach Grove Road water line extension—expansion engineering only, and the Lanair and Morton subdivision for sewer main engineering only. These two projects will be shelf-ready in case there's any grant money. Mike Keefe, zoning administrator for the city of Bucyrus, asked if I refer fees for zoning permits to the finance committee to discuss proposed changes.
So the referral for zoning permits to finance committee need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Mr. Mead seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. It has been referred. Any questions for the Service Director? When you say shelf-ready, I assume you mean shovel-ready.
I did mean shovel-ready. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Because we don't want to shelf the product.
No, no, no. Thanks.
Moving on to the Law Directors' Report, Mr. Gobright.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to talk a little bit about legislation. We are churning out legislation quickly, and we're making progress on it. My to-do list for Thursday is complete, except for a couple of more treaty edits that I need to work on. I'm looking to have a productive committee meeting. In my role as city prosecutor, I've come across a case where a defendant was cited under the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 549.01, which is discharging a firearm and other things within city limits. A couple of years, this issue was reined in by the state legislature, and as a result, I would like to refer that ordinance to the Health and Safety Committee to more comply with the Ohio statute.
So in 2020, I believe we stripped every firearm ordinance off the books. Rob Ratliff brought this up, and—
Still there.
I'm wondering if the—
So did we have something?
With the change out of many—having many council clerks, if they forgot to send it into the company that takes it out of the permanent record, because—
Can I make—
There's—
Can I make a motion, refer it to the committee, and then between now and tomorrow, we can do some more reading? and tomorrow, we can do some more research, and if we need to discuss it tomorrow, it's there in committee, but I, I believe Mr. Finkhauser is correct, we, Mr. Ratliff was very thorough in what we did, and it was for that exact reason that you stayed.
It's still on the books, and.
There's, there's, there should be an ordinance where it was fully repealed.
Yeah, I agree.
In 2020.
Nonetheless, I'd like to refer, uh, Bussaras Codified Ordinance 549.01 to Health and Safety.
Okay.
Mr. Myers made the motion to refer that, Mr., Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Me seconded on favor.
Aye.
All po- all opposed. Okay, yeah, it's been referred.
Aye.
It's been referred, and the Thursday night, we're not having meetings Thursday, they're tomorrow.
Oh, they're tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah, because of the candlelight Christmas.
Gotcha. Next thing I'd like to note is I've reached out to the mayor and the Service Safety Director to offer my assistance in coordinating with manufacturing and/or industrial businesses to come to Bussaras. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified and situated as an attorney to be a good middleman with the city and a business and their point of contact. I've requested that they furnish me a list of businesses that have expressed, expressed interest, or that they otherwise believe would be a good fit for the city, so that I can start making phone calls and get the ball rolling. In my mind, even if we come up dry on the list, at least we tried. The mayor, Service Safety Director, and myself will be meeting soon to discuss the details, but I would like to get moving on this as soon as possible. Uh, next, I want to touch on the union negotiations. There appears to be some confusion regarding the raise for city employees. To clarify, we had negotiations with the Ask Me Union recently. They put forward a rate, a wage re-opener to tweak the final year of the three-year contract pertaining to the 2025 year. Through negotiations, we came to an agreement of $4.25 an hour being a global raise, meaning that every employee receives a $4.25 an hour raise for the 2025 year. This $4.25 an hour raise is in place of, not cumulative to, the percentage increase that automatically applies at the beginning of the new year. It's in place of it. At the end of 2025, full negotiations will begin, uh, for the new contract with this union. Ultimately, $4.25 an hour is substantially less than what they were originally asking for, and negotiating is more of an art than a science. I would request everybody take a deep breath and let the administration and myself do our thing. This raise puts us in the same position as we were in dollar-wise as when the current contract was negotiated in 2022. I will say this, though, anyone who would like to come volunteer their time to go dig trenches in negative degree weather, in four feet of water to fix water lines this winter, is free to call up the Service Safety Director and see if something can be worked out. And the audit for the Bussaras Community Improvement Corporation is still ongoing. Not much has happened with this. I have a phone call scheduled with State Auditor's Office on Wednesday to go over some things, however, it's still an ongoing audit, and there's nothing to report on at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for the Law Director? Mr. Myers?
To your point number two, um, I would ask that you also include Sarah Hurley from the partnership in all of those conversations about bringing business and industry to town. I applaud you.
Sure.
I think all of us are absolutely in favor of jobs, jobs, jobs. But that is one thing that we contract with them to do as well, rather than you, you know, reinventing the wheel or fighting against them, and in some senses, I would rather see maybe if you could be on the same page and meet with her and bring her into the fold as well.
Sure.
Any other questions for the Law Director, Ms. Sherrick?
I know it was mentioned before, but could you explain to people where that raise comes from versus where people are immediately thinking it comes from, rather than the general fund?
Not from the general fund.
Right, it doesn't come from the general fund.
Some does.
Some does, but that's more a question for the auditor.
A small amount does come from the general fund. Most of the employees who work up at City Hall, they are parceled and pieced out percentage-wise between the different funds, so for instance, my clerks, uh, yes, we work in City Hall, but they're paid through multiple funds because they're paying the bills for, you know, the water fund, the sewer and drain fund, they're doing work for all those funds. So most of the City Hall employees are broken out, but still a portion of that, their pay does come from the general fund.
Just, just a portion of it, right?
Do you have any idea what the number for what exactly will come out of the general fund will be?
Not off the top of my head, no. And, and the reason is I'd have to calculate that out because I can't just like look at personal services in the general fund, because for instance, like the mayor, the service director, myself, well, the service director is broken too, but the mayor, law director, myself, there are some of us, especially the elected officials, council members, the council clerk, who are fully paid from the general fund. So it, it wouldn't just be an easy report to run, I'd have to break it all out.
Legislation was requested at the last Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Gobert. I noticed that it was not here in the packet tonight, is that because it's still being worked on?
Uh, which legislation are you referring to?
The Ask Me raises, and then there was another one directly after that.
Oh, yes, that one's still, that one's still being worked on.
That would be the manpower bill at one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is this all public record as far as what the rate schedules potentially are going to be?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the Law Director? Moving on, Auditor, Ms. Lewis.
No report.
Any questions for the auditor?
Um, if I can address Greg's question he posed during public participation for the raises, um, anything, any increase in expenses of one area, we would have to decrease expenses in another area, so if personal services go up due to raises, we would have to decrease expenses in projects or something like that, or we would have to increase revenues, and whichever, that, those are the two ways that we would make up for that pay, the pay increase, making cuts or increasing revenues.
So potentially, like, we would have less money to pave streets and stuff? Because?
Yeah.
That might then be diverted to wages.
I mean, it's like balancing a checkbook at home. If you're going to put more in this section because you decide you want, uh, not just cable, but also Netflix, maybe you're not going to eat McDonald's one day that month, you know? Same kind of concept.
I had something else to ask. Oh, 2025 draft budget, do we have one yet?
We don't have one yet, I am working diligently on it. I am to the water fund at this point in time, just a few more enterprise funds. And it should be. Ready.
Any other final questions for the auditor? Seeing none, moving on, there's no Treasurers Report, no Police Chief Report, there is a Fire Department October Report, 2024 Fire and EMS.
Can I make a motion to accept and file?
Second.
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to accept and file the Fire Department's October Report on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It is accepted, and then I need a motion to accept the City Officers' Reports.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, has passed and has been accepted and filed. Visitors input regarding standing in special committees and of city officers. We don't have any visitors input, moving on, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed Ordinance 38-2024, uh, Bussaras Codified Ordinance, uh, Chapter 905 Sidewalks, uh, mending and supplementing Chapter 905 entitled sidewalks under Title I, entitled street and sidewalk areas, under Part 9, entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Service Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras. Proposed Resolution 237-2024, it's the airport for the runway upgrades, authorizing and directing the mayor and public service safety director on behalf of the City of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., 8101 North High Street, Suite 150, Columbus, Ohio, 43235, to upgrade the current runway at Port Bussaras Airport not to exceed $395,000. Further, authorizing and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants and payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations in declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 238-2024, it's amending Resolution 202-2024. Mending Resolution 202-2024, appointing Miranda G. Wise to fill the position of Bussaras Council Clerk on a full-time, 40-hour-per-week basis from January 1, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, at an hourly figure of $25.25, together with the available health insurance and sick leave entitlements, et cetera, for all non-union, non-elected, full-time, 40-hour-per-week city employees. Further, the clerk's 40-hour-per-week shall include her attendance at all regularly scheduled and specially called council meetings and regularly scheduled and specially called committee meetings. Further, the clerk shall be paid compensation of one and one-half times the basic hourly rate for hours worked over 40 hours when authorized by the council president, set appointment commencing retroactively to January 1st, 2025.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
I've got a question of clarification on proposed Resolution 237-2024, that not to exceed dollar amount is changed from what Ms. Wise read versus what was in the packet. I just wanted that explained for the public.
Um, so Mrs. DeShawn had pointed out to Brandon and I this morning that there was a Scribner error, um, so I, this afternoon, this evening, closer to the council meeting time, uh, I went ahead and I amended it to read what it did in the section instead of the.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Ms. Sherrick.
I had a question about ordinance number 38-2024. Do we need to pass it as a first reading, or can we go ahead and refer that back to committee to have some changes made to it?
It could be referred back, the only thing that's emergency tonight is the airport runway upgrades.
I mean, but do we do that prior to the first reading? Ask to have it referred, or voting on it there? Okay, so can I make a motion to refer ordinance number 38-2024 back to committee?
You need a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion to refer ordinance 38-2024 back to committee, Mr. Hickman seconded on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Say something. Okay, it's been referred back. 239-2024 was not advanced out of committee, so then we need a motion to accept these as first readings.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Did you vote, Karen? I didn't, I didn't hear you. Okay, those have been accepted as first reading, public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Nobody. Move on then. Then refer back to originating committee. Ordinance Resolution 237-2024 referred back to service. Resolution 238-2024 referred back to finance. And Service Committees.
Uh, Service Committee is in favor of proposal Resolution 237-2024, airport runway upgrades.
Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable, proposed Resolution 238-2024, which amends Resolution 202-2024.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 237-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 237-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Resolution 237-2024 duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. No old and unfinished business. Moving on, new and miscellaneous business?
Mr. Gobert? At this time, could I request that the, uh, President of Council step down from his seat and have the President pro temp come up on the basis of censure conversation?
You can make that motion.
I make a motion to, uh, ask to have Mr. Finkhauser step down from his seat for the time being, to have Mr. Myers step into it, so we can speak about censure.
I'll second.
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion. Mr. Hickman has seconded the motion for Mr. Myers to take over the upcoming, whatever she's planning on doing. I'm going to call for roll call vote on that.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, here you go.
Yep. Ms. Sherrick, uh, yes, I'm to present.
We're having some issues in council, and everybody in the community sees it. At this point in time, I would like to ask to have Mrs. Shireman censured on the ways in which she has been acting in council and towards constituents. And I'd also like to ask for a censure on Mr. Finkhauser due to his increased attacks on both council and constituents.
Mr. Gobert?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to you for proper procedure to Ms. Sherrick's request.
So those need to be broken up into separate requests.
All right, so let's address the first one, um, again.
Why, why can't I proceed over the first one?
Me? I don't know why.
It just made sense since they were being brought up.
I, if it doesn't involve me, there's no reason I shouldn't be able to preside over that, the Ms. Sherrick one.
Motion is made.
Well, they only voted to specifically for if it had to do with me, so.
They're here to think how's it recognized for this, no?
They made the motion, and it was passed.
Okay, so my question then to you is to her first question, what is proper procedure?
Uh, you want to take a short recess, so I can read up on it, make sure I get it right?
I have a motion for, uh, recess.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for recess by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Hickman, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, if you would, business-wise.
Uh, Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
We're in recess at 7:48 PM. We're back from recess at 7:51 PM, Mr. Gobert.
Thank you. Uh, so clarified with Robert's rules there, uh, it is just a majority vote, so, uh, you make the motion, you guys discuss it, uh, you, uh, then vote on it, and majority rules as to whether or not a censure is going to be issued.
So do you have a motion, or?
I'd like to make a motion to censure Ms. Shireman. Do we just, I mean, do we put specifics in there, or just?
Yes.
On, on the basis of attacking constituents, contacting people's places of work under the guise of being city council, but not. the guise of being city council, but not with the backing of city council, outbursts within the council chambers, attacking people in the comments of the council meeting?
And now it's got to go to discussion.
No, it did. Was there a second?
Yeah, got to go to a second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Sherrick and a second by Mr. Hickman. Is there any discussion?
Now, I can discuss since I had handled over gavel under Robert's rules. I just want to say this is a kangaroo court at this point. The only person that actually needs censured here is Erin Sherrick for what she's done in the council.
Okay, Mr. Finkhauser, I'm going to ask that you keep it civil. You've done a really good job so far this evening. Let's continue to keep it civil, please. Any further discussion? Ms. Wise, would you do a roll call vote to...
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
She can't vote.
No.
No, she gets to vote.
Oh, I was going to say, what I read in Robert's rules?
I would recommend that you abstain. That way, you're not voting either way. That would be the correct procedure.
Oh, well, then, maybe somebody should have told me that. I think you abstained.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Cat motion carries.
All right, my second motion would be on Mr. Finkhauser for his actions attacking various council people and constituents via videos as of late taped conversations, the clown bags, and trying to get people fired from their jobs.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Hickman. Is there any discussion?
I have discussion. I just want to say this is also a kangaroo court on this one as well, and there are some people in here that obviously are offended because things have come out on them, and this is their little kangaroo court that they're going to try to do something about. That's the end of my discussion.
Any further discussion? Ms. Wise, would you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
And me?
Yes.
Cat motion carries. Ms. Sherrick, did you have anything further?
No, it's just those two.
All right.
Now it's time to turn the gavel back over.
I'm fixing to ask for a motion for that, if you'll just be patient with me. I have a motion to return the gavel to the president.
So moved.
I second.
I have a first by Mr. Hickman, a second by Mrs. Shireman. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Wise.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yeah, motion carries.
There you go.
Okay, at this time, we're still on the new business. I'd like to entertain a motion for the censure of Councilwoman Sherrick for her behavior in the council clerk's office on September 19, where she was throwing expletives and doing all kinds of other crazy stuff. So I'd like to ask for a motion at this time.
I will file, I will do a motion to file censure on Erin Cherry.
Need a second? Okay, apparently, at this time, this council condones the type of behavior that Mrs. Sherrick has exhibited in the council clerk's office on September 19. What's your point, Mr. Hickman?
Your job is to run the meeting, not give opinion. You need to move on.
Okay, I'm going to rule that we're going to move on to continuing new and miscellaneous business. Is there any other new and miscellaneous business? What are the referrals, Ms. Wise?
Fees for zoning permits to finance, Bussiris codified ordinance 549.01 to health and safety, letter from the Bussiris Public Library to economic development, 316 to 320 Woodlawn to platting, ponds to platting.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned at 7:58 PM.